Those two we had in-person interviews with and Renaissance Group was one of them. And after that interview, it is the committee's request that we engage Renaissance Group as our group to lead this project. They would be doing the architectural design, engineering work, plan work, estimating, and the project management from basically start to finish. So if the board decides that this is the group we go with, they'll be with us from start to finish. So I've asked Michael Terry with Renaissance Group to come in tonight and present their RFQ and answer any questions you guys may have. So I'll let him take over. He's got a presentation and then feel free to ask questions.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Vice Mayor. We'll see if we can make this kind of happen here. Again, thank you. We're Renaissance Group. We're located in Lakeland, Tennessee, which is a suburb of Memphis, basically, and just excited about the project, certainly excited to be selected and certainly considered. So I'd like to say if you have any questions as we go through, I always find it's kind of better to go ahead and ask them and not it's not so formal that we have to make it to the end to be able to answer any questions. So get rolling. First about us. Okay, yeah. We were founded in 1979, which means we have been in business 43 years. We currently have about 33 employees, full-time employees. The services we provide is not only architecture, but we have in-house civil engineering, planning, and interiors. And we do serve multiple markets. Municipal work is one, but we feel like we're a well-rounded firm that offers a lot of services to a lot of different type markets. This is the six partners. Ron couldn't make it. He was actually in our interview. He's actually traveling to Nashville tomorrow. But so I was happy, happy to be here. Kind of looks like something on the post office wall, doesn't it? So again, just we've completed over 14 fire stations and also in addition to that, some fire admin buildings. And that's probably over the last 10 years. We have more than that that we've done since our beginning in 79. We are very committed, obviously, to project milestones and project schedules. Part of that is budgets. We, as crazy as our world is with costs these days, we do the best we can to get the proper budgets in place and give you proper information on that. We do, we have done building modeling systems. I don't think that was asked for in this project, but the computer software that we do is basically a three-dimensional software program, which gives us an ability to, I think, better present, especially during the design. We can look at things with a 3D image, which is always better than 2D. And we've done several lead projects. Again, that's not something that's requested at this project, but for example, the two fire stations we've done for the city of Franklin have both been lead certified projects. So technology-wise, I mentioned Revit and BIM. We've actually even incorporated virtual reality in some of our, particularly our preliminary designs. Again, that with photolistic rendering capability, we're able to generate images that look like photographs. And again, when we're in the early schematic design phase, we find that that's a lot better way to transmit our information where people can fully understand what. Okay? Yeah. It's kind of interesting. Yeah, we've used it and we've actually had clients see things in our virtual reality tours, and that's caused us to change the design early on. So it's a, it's a very helpful tool. There's no doubt. Okay. Project approach. Again, this is important to us. We certainly believe in investing time to develop relationships. Everybody kind of says that, but what we like to kind of focus on more is what's valuable to you. Every client values different things. Some, some clients, it's really just budget. We have a lot of clients like that. But again, in a project like this, a fire station, you're looking at a facility that's 24/7 type facility where it's actually a home to these firemen. So it's a little more than just a budget concern. The design needs to be right and we need to identify the priorities as needed and basically use that in our design. So that's what we do on all the projects. We've kind of taken this approach. It's kind of the four Rs. We are constantly looking in our firm to update and do, do things differently. Technology leads us that way sometimes, but we're always open. We call it rebirth. I know a lot of firms kind of don't really appreciate that, but we're always looking to do things better and see what better ways there are. Relationship is critical to us, obviously. Again, I feel like that's how we eventually get to a design that works is because we develop that relationship with the owners. And through that, we, we're able to realize, again, what's valuable to you, and we're able to respond in a way that our design reflects that. So it's worked well and we have a lot of repeat clients because of that. So again, people say, what makes us different? You know, the, there's all a cliche that form always follows function in the architectural world. We like to think that we add to that client values with innovative design, and we believe that's the formula for a very successful project. Again, with our fire station experience and again, project understanding is critical. Team organization, this is very important. We've taken the approach in our firm that we, one of the partners is involved in every project. A lot of firms you hire, that's not the case, but that's how serious we are about client satisfaction. So there's always someone. This project, it'll be me and my other partner, Ron, will be tag teaming on it. But any issues ever, you guys can reach out to us because we're going to be involved in it from the beginning to the end. Information gathering, that's part of it. We'll schedule meetings with the fire department and their team. We'll control and plan the schedule. Again, we always coordinate with all of the consultants. There may be some people that you, that you guys bring to the table, and we certainly will coordinate with those individuals also. And lastly, and most importantly, always communication. We find that's always the best strategy, no matter what we're doing, is, is good communication. So experience, again, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look through the actual response to the RFQ, but these are just a few of the fire stations that we've done in the past, you know, seven or so years. We've done Franklin Fire 8, which you guys are probably familiar with that. That's really close to you guys. We also, I don't know which the next one is, which is a floor plan of it. It's hard to tell, but most of the fire stations we do are typically three-bay type fire stations. And, and I think that's what we're looking at here, too. So again, they're all unique. They're not, they're not copies. They're all very directly involved with what the needs of that particular fire department is, and they always are different one to the other. We also did Columbia Fire Station number three. That's the new one that they've done. Little bit, a little story about this one. They came to us with asking us early on if we could design something that laid off of their original fire station that they had downtown. It burned, I'm not sure what year it burned in, but they had some old black and white photographs of that facility. And we use those to help as a basis of design for that facility. And it, it's, it's unique in a lot of ways. And again, one of my favorite ones that we've done because of that. So again, just a quick floor plan of it. Again, the, the three apparatus bays are beginning to be more typical, but the living quarters and how they are arranged and the needs that are required for that varies greatly between fire department, fire department. We also did Franklin Fire 7, which was actually after Franklin Fire 8, which was kind of interesting. But that one, I know you guys are talking about the possibility of an EMS facility being part of this. And that's really, this one was basically Franklin Fire 8, except we added the EMS staff in there. So it added another apparatus bay and another separate sleep and living quarters to that fire station. So and again, if y'all have any questions about any of these, please, please ask.
I assume that Chief will be involved in the layout of those sleeping quarters, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I noticed there are three beds and that's a little tight. Wouldn't it be better to have two bed?
So I think, I think what Franklin does, so Franklin Fire Station has private sleeping rooms. That's kind of the trend in the fire service now, especially since there's more women firefighters coming into the service. You don't want to have the three bunk rooms are all counted on. I think what Franklin does in their rooms, they have three beds in there, but each shift has their own bed. So the A shift firefighter sleeps in the first bed, the D shift firefighter sleeps in the second.
Oh, I see. Okay.
They're not sharing beds at all for that. But I think that's kind of the way that they do it, which is kind of half and half. Some, some stations do that. Some of Columbia's, some of their stations do it that way. Their new one doesn't. They got private rooms where each firefighter, they don't count them.
That's, that's exactly correct. They, they, even though they're three beds, they're only, they're still individual rooms. But I have found that the trend certainly has been for the single bunk, private sleep rooms. So.
And then like a refrigerator for each shift, right?
Refrigerator for each shift. Depending, we've put actually locks on those refrigerators for each shift. That's really Chief's call, but there's a lot of ways to do that.
And then separate area for EMS?
So we will, we will have conversations with Williamson County who are kind of early on in this, because our design for what we need could just be two beds. If they choose to be a partner with us in this, then we would add another bed. I don't necessarily think I would totally separate and build a whole other living quarter with it. Like, I think they can come add it with us if that's what they choose to do. But like I said, some will be there at all, kind of how the space lays out on the property, things like that. But it'll, it'll be up to them, again, if they want to partner with us. And we've had some early conversations and said they'd like to. I don't know what the timeframe of it, but we'll have those conversations early on with the county once we have this sorted.
Yeah, again, Franklin 8 separated them totally. We've just wrapped up one, the design for one in Carrville, Tennessee, and they have an EMS, but they are sharing a bunk, a private bunk room with the other fire personnel. So again, that's, that's really a call for the Chief.
Yeah. And I guess, I guess what I was asking is like, you're, you're going to be, I know that when we just had like a commissioner training, BOC training out at the fire hall, and I know that there were some things that you would have seen, would have liked to have seen done differently. So the coordination between the Chief and, yeah.
I'm, I'm the chair of already.
Oh, good. Because I know that you know from what you've, what you're experiencing right now, what could be done. It's always good because we know what can be done better in the, the next fire hall. So.
Yeah. And again, I can't stress enough that every fire department we work with is really quite a bit different in what, how, you know, how the, how the sleep rooms are set up is always a big thing. And so again, we, we approach these as they're, they're custom buildings every time. We've, we've done a lot of them, but that doesn't mean I'm going to come in and say, hey, you know, this is, this is the way you should do it. Because again, they're all very personal and they're all really custom, no matter where we build them. So.
Mr. Terry, is there any incentive for a lead build financially?
What we have found, and again, this, it's hard to pinpoint this, but what we have found is when we do the lead certification, it's usually about a seven to eight percent increase in construction cost. And again, a lot of that is just going the, the general contractors, there's a lot of things they have to identify and track during construction. And of course, that cost, as far as materials go, there's really very little difference in what we spec than what ends up in lead. It's just the process sometimes gets a little bit. So again, that's the ones we've tracked. It's about seven to eight percent more overall when you, when you invoke the lead requirements in there.
And lastly, I think we have a second question we had in the interview. And what Michael kind of expressed to us is a lot of the things they do on already the requirements for lead, they're just not, doesn't end up being a lead certification. They're not doing anything different.
Is there anything in it for Fairview if we have the lead stamp on it? You know, is it, what does it mean for us? Or is it fun, is funding better if you put a lead building or grants or?
You know, I would, I would have to trust y'all's opinion on the grants because I'm typically not involved in that. I know, I know the city of Franklin, for example, they at some point had a city ordinance that said any city-owned facilities would meet a minimum lead standards. And that's what I see. Germantown, Tennessee does the same thing. And that's really where I've experienced the lead requirements is when there's been a city ordinance. And again, you're, you're going to get a fire station that's not a lot different than a lead one anyway. It's just the recognition won't be there. But we certainly could do it. I mean, that's, that certainly, again, we've, we've got quite a bit of experience with that. Great. Okay. Design elements. This is, this is kind of, again, important to us. There's a lot, I mean, a fire station is not a typical facility of any, in any stretch of the imagination. There's a lot of specialty kind of considerations from, you know, parking, for example. All that depends on the number of people on a shift and how, how much overlapping parking occurs. All that's different in every fire station we do. You know, the apparatus doors are a rare, very critical issue. We've, we've done high-speed doors. We've done a product that they call four-fold doors. Doors are the most problematic device in a fire station. History proves that. And so we've come up with, there's technology out there that helps mitigate that. So certainly we look at all that. The apparatus bay is a very specialized area. We have to deal with decontamination, vehicle exhaust. I mean, it's, fire stations, a lot of fire stations we've done have wanted a medical room because they have a lot of people that drive up to the fire station in an emergency. Instead of going to the ER, they, they pull in there. So there's, Franklin, for example, does have a medical room where they have a gurney and they have storage material where they can actually treat someone there on site. So those are all, again, special requirements that depends on what the fire departments need. And again, laundry's a big deal, extractors. Again, we, this is a lot of specialized things that we end up getting into when we get into the fire stations. Public spaces, that's, that's kind of interesting. A lot of times we put a, a, I'll say a police substation, for lack of better terms, basically an office where the police can come in and they have access to 24/7. Typically off the lobby, it doesn't really impact the living quarters of the fire station. But it's something that a lot of communities feel like is a nice thing to have. We've done those on quite a few. We talked about the medical treatment room. We've done training rooms where the city actually has a training center that's part of those fire stations. So again, there's a lot of different choices and a lot of things we can do that coexist with a typical fire station. We talked a little bit about the private spaces. The gender separation is a huge issue, and the way we design the sleep rooms and the toilets and showers certainly take that into consideration. So again, it's like I said earlier, it's, it's a custom building every time we do one to make sure we meet the needs of the users. Yeah, meeting rooms. And again, we, we have, in most of the fire stations have been able to work in some type of training type devices in the building at a very minimum cost. We do, a lot of them were able to do some repelling that's in there. We just structurally have to plan for that so that they can tie off and do. So it's really, again, it's, it's the creativity of the, of the fire department and fire chief that we can really work in any type of training device, I think, within reason to these buildings have. So. We talked about this a little bit. Materials, you know, we're, we're going to, back to the lead. The type of materials with life cycle costing, we're going to build a building that's a 50-plus year type building. We're, we're not looking for something that's going to start falling apart in five or 10 years. We realize the investment the city makes in these facilities and we build them out of quality material and again, build them to last. And, and we do, we do look at how they're maintained, how they're cleaned even. The, the better we can design these things where maintenance and cleaning is at kind of a minimum, the better it works. So, and we've come up with a lot of solutions for that through the years. Again, this is just, again, more for the fire people, major trends. We talked about gender separation and the training. Night blindness is a kind of a big deal. If you guys aren't aware, the, the firemen, if they get up at night to go to the restroom or whatever, lights being on their bodies, it's hard for them to go back to sleep. So we've, we've designed systems that minimize that tremendously with the proper lighting and the way it's done. So again, these are things that we've done that are specialized, but we're very familiar with. Again, hot zone separation, that's more about just taking care of the firemen, making sure that they're, they're able to clean and not carry contaminants throughout their living quarters. And again, the way we design these fire stations, we believe that we do a lot to help, help take care of that. And I guess the last question, why is us? Again, our, our presentation is what makes us different than other architects. And we went over most of these. Again, we, we're very, very interested in what your priority is. Forty-four years of experience. We pride ourselves in not only producing the drawings in a timely manner, but hopefully staying under budget, even though, again, the last three years has been, it's been a trick to, to control that. Partner involvement in every part of it, we think that's critical. It's worked well for us. And we get a lot of positive feedback from our clients on that. And quality construction documents, we believe we do a really good job. And we think we're very innovative when it comes to fire stations with the experience that we have. So great. Any questions?
I like the attention to detail that when I was, I was with Earl Swenson for about 15 years and we took the regular hospitals that were cold and just plain and sterile, and we made it feel like more of a home.
Absolutely.
I worked for three years on the Vanderbilt Children's Hospital, and that was our goal with all of the, you know, ceilings with the animals and all of the characters and the sun and moon and stars and just making it, we, we found that in working with the doctors, that if you do that, it helps a patient get better faster if they're feeling, you know, that type situation. So when I'm looking at your exterior renderings of the buildings, it, it makes me feel good to look at, you know, the attention to detail that you, it's not just, you know, your plain building with some doors that go up. I appreciate.
And we do even try on the interior. We realize, again, these are not only 24/7, but there are people living. This is their second home. And so certainly, it's, it's hard to do that in an environment that they're in.
Well, see, and that's what, that's what I was trying to say, too, is like, you know, these pe, these firemen, I mean, that is their second home and they, you know, that's, that's where they live a lot of their time. So it being not like a dorm room that's block walls and single, you know, twin beds, just a little bit more homey.
A little bit better.
I would think, you know, would be, I, I would, it's kind of funny. I'm looking at this, this picture right here and it reminds me of the sky out here two days ago. So I was like, when did you put this together? Because that, that looked like our sky out here two days ago.
That's funny.
So that's pretty cool.
Great.
Anything from?
What are next steps? If we approve tonight, what are, what take us, process from there?
Well, if, if approved tonight, then we would probably set up the first thing, some programming meetings with the fire department and the chief and start, again, communicating. We want to find out what they have in their mind and sit down and start getting a record of that. And eventually what that's going to do is give us the, the guidance to start doing some preliminary and schematic design work. So we know we've got the site. It's already been determined. And so taking the site with their programming requirements and then we'll actually start designing not only the building, but how the building sits on the site and how it works, you know. So yeah, it's, it's when the, the process really starts, is when we start the programming requirements. Yeah.
Will you be bringing the BIM modeling back here so that the board can walk through the building?
If requested, yeah. I mean, we, our software, yeah. Again, probably not, the contractors won't really utilize it. I mean, we work a lot with particularly larger projects where they want to, but we still offer that, too. But yes, we, we can bring the 3D, you know, again, imaging and moving around where we can look at things. And when we get to that point, again, I, I tell my clients, especially the, the fire chiefs, that I don't want, when they, when this thing gets built, I don't want him to go in and say, wow, that's, that surprised me. No, I want him to know what we're getting.
Or I wish we had done something a different way.
Or I wish we had done something different. So again, the 3D imaging helps that. It's, some people, as you know, Mayor, can't look at a 2D image and really understand it.
That's right.
Most people understand 3D imaging. And, and that really has been a help in our, in our industry. So.
We had meetings with all of our consultants when we did BIM and Revit. And actually, the best thing was we found conflicts.
Oh, yeah. That's, I didn't even talk about that.
The modeling helped us find, oh, that really needs to be done differently or, you know. So it was a, a big positive. I'm glad that y'all work with that. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And one of the things that I just want to make sure everybody understands, that in the budget this year, we have budgeted for this process up to.
You might want to come to the mic. Sorry.
So in this year's budget, we have budgeted up to basically construction documents. So through schematic. Yeah, through schematic design. So at the end of this budget year, we hope to have a floor plan, some elevations, and definitely a cost estimate.
And site, site.
Site plan, those type things. So it'll be everything just before we get the documents that they need for construction. We'll have to budget that in a later time, like later in the, like maybe the next budget year. So this isn't just one project we're trying to get all the way through by the end of this year. You know, part of this depends on a road improvement that we're doing, the city's doing. And the one thing that we talked to Michael about and Ron is we need to make sure one thing that we talked to Michael about and Ron is we need to make sure that the station's not open and we have no road that goes to it. So we want to make sure that that kind of all works together and their timing and I think they've worked on projects before that kind of had the same thing, basically didn't have a road there and that's basically how ours would be right now, there would be no road to it. So we don't want an empty station sitting there, ready to open and no road to get to it. So there'll be some coordination. I've told our committee, this, this is just another step in the process, this is still a lengthy process. So I just want everybody to understand, there won't be a fire station out there by the end of this budget year, probably not the end of the next budget year, but we're just going to keep trying to move forward with this process. And we feel that the Renaissance group kind of aligned with our vision and, and our needs for the station, they understood it, they've done similar projects. We like where, kind of where their brain goes and our brain, we talk about the same things and they've done it before, they've done it several times. And I, I know that, that he says that they're not going to come in and say, "Hey, you got to do this," but I think the value in their experience is if we say, "Hey, we want to do this this way," he can go, "Well, here are the pitfalls if you do it this way," or, "Yes, that's fine to do it this way," or, "Maybe we ought to think about another way to do it." So that's just kind of where we are right now and I'll let you keep asking questions of Mike, if you got any more.
I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
As far as the renderings for the single floor versus the two-story at Columbia, is there an advantage to the single story? I mean, or is there advantage to the, to the two-story?
Good question. Typically in construction, they say it's cheaper to go up than out. The interesting thing that's unique about the fire stations is the apparatus bays are already two stories in height. They're, they're a single story use, so you have the height of, of a big portion of the building anyway. And so I feel like that, especially if the site is somewhat limited, but even if you have a lot of site area, I think a lot of, a lot of projects feel like it's better to go up and it's also a, more of a separation between the sleeping areas versus the living areas in these, so there's some advantages to that.
That was going to be my next question, would be more wrestle for the, for the fireman to be on the second floor and not be mixing, mincing, you know.
Yep, that's what I, I've seen. Now, there's disadvantages. Reaction time, some would argue, if they're on the first floor, they go directly out and...
Well, they should already have the pole.
And the pole, you know, we usually, if we do a two-story, we usually have a fireman's pole.
That would be cool to put the fireman's pole in.
And they use it, so I've never, the two-story ones we've done, I've never gotten any feedback that they've lost any reaction time, but again, that's, that's kind of my opinion, but again, I would lean on the fire chief because that's the important thing is how he feels about that, but.
Thank you. I actually like the two-story myself, I guess you could tell that one to my question, so.
I do too. I mean, it's, again, we do some of both.
Yeah.
And Columbia's, again, Columbia's was just unique because of the historic element that we had in that one, so.
Thank you, sir.
You have any questions?
I do not.
Okay.
No ma'am, thank you, sir, for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have about 15 minutes. We can let all the, all the rest of the girls in and...